All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 5:04 PM. The first item on tonight's meeting agenda is a District Priority Resources Budget Development Workshop, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees and staff members, thanks for being here tonight. As you know, tonight marks the kickoff of our budget development season, although our team has been hard at work to be ready already for this. But we had an important conversation that we wanted to begin with the board this evening about budget planning. It is our team puts together a thoughtful budget over the course of the next few months for your consideration in June. We want to engage in dialogue about that process and also about the parameters and guidance that you had at this point in the process. So Garland's gonna lead us through some discussion tonight, and hopefully we'll also hit a couple of things to celebrate about the purpose of the meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Smith, Trustees, President Choppa. Presenting, we're gonna do a couple activities for you tonight. We wanted to, as Dr. Smith said, kinda engage the board in just a collaborative discussion to find what our key assumptions are. As he said, in the budget development process, we talked about bringing these assumptions and how do we come up with the revenue. So we'll dive into that and do a little activity that surrounds the assumptions that we actually bring to you. And then what we're hoping to get from you is input. We want you to talk about the parameters. We want you to look at some of the assumptions that we give you. We want you to ask questions about why are you giving us these assumptions? When we come to you and say, here's the average daily attendance, and it's based on enrollment, and it's based on the attendance percent, we want you to ask questions so that that will help you in creating the financial priorities and guiding principles for what we need to do, and then putting what else within parameters so that we know when we build a budget, what does the board want for us to do. So before we get started on that, I want to give you just a quick overview of the adopted budget and the change in fund balance. This is a tenure period, and historical information starting in 2014, 2015 through the 2030s and 2011 seasons. And what I wanted to point out to you is if you look in fiscal year 2023, fiscal year 2023, and you'll notice what our actual results are, it's a little bit higher because of ESR funds. So whenever we look at historical data, we have to remember that that time period is gonna look a little different. When you see these large numbers like this, it's because of ESR. But you'll note also, in 2023 and 2024, we're really closer. So we've talked about the swing about, we started two or three years ago. I know Mr. Choppa and Mr. Willbaker will remember that. He said, we adopted a big deficit budget, and when we end the year, you know, we put money back into fund balance. So in the last few years, financial services as part of this HR, we started looking at what our vacant positions are, looking at how many position count is, and trying to determine when we build a budget, what is really, you know, what that number is really going to look like. Are we gonna be 100% fill rate? Are we gonna be 95% fill rate? And then determining what those vacant positions might look like. And that's why you'll see that in 2024, basically, this budget is balanced because we started out from the beginning identifying where we should be.
Quick question, Dora. So going back to the two years, most recent years, where we didn't have a positive net change in fund balance. Last year was because the year prior, we did 52 million that we moved to capital, what's the account?
Level capital outlay.
We moved some of that money to capital outlay. If we wouldn't have moved that, that number would have been positive.
That's true. So he's talking about fiscal year 2023, when we actually had a surplus of 71 million. So again, we had the swing because we adopted a deficit budget of 32, but we ended up with 71 or more, and we actually pulled that money out. Which kind of, you know, we're really close within the $4 million. That's a good question.
Yeah, and the same thing in 2018, 2019. Similar, right?
Yes, similar.
Yeah.
And so then this is another look at it. It just gives you what our revenues were, the actual numbers, actual revenue and actual expenditures, and then what the difference is. And again, you can note that we've been really close here in our, well, in our actual numbers. And then you have the ESR years that you see where we were generating more revenue or we were using ESR dollars to spend on some of our general operating items, mostly salaries.
Trustees, I think this is a really good slide. Should you wanna share this when you're talking with the community on this? Because there's questions sometimes about what you adopt, you know, how you end up. Because school finance is complex to talk about in the community. But this very clearly shows how much money came into the district and how much did you spend. And you can see, I use the 23, 24 years as a sample. So there was a difference of $439,000 on a $612 million budget, and how close that actually is. That's about as deliberate and thoughtful budgeting as you see throughout the state. So just wanna give kudos to the boards of the past and the administration in the past that have done a really good job managing the resources consistently for this school district so that we're not in the same situation that some other districts are in right now. And this, I believe, shows you a really good story.
And then again, I'll point out the percentages as well. If you look at those percentages, the dark numbers are showing you 4%, 5%, 8%. Actually, you know, those again were the ESR years. But basically, in 23, 24, that budget was pretty much balanced. We did use ESR funds there as well, but the way we were adopting the budget was clearly different than we've done in the past, trying to make sure that we didn't have that swing. And the importance of that is, you don't wanna say have a deficit budget and not have funding that you're using for student spending. So as I said, tonight, we're gonna cover about two major themes, assumptions and parameters. And we'll start out with assumptions. This is what we gave the board in 23, 24, about 24, 25, when we adopted our year's budget. And so what I want you to get out of the activity that we'll do tonight is when we give you this, what actually does it mean? So we'll know these things, and we'll have some table conversations that'll tell you, why did they land on an average daily attendance of that? We know the basic allotment hasn't changed. We know we're in a legislative year and it could change. But I want you to, when we give you this information, I want you to know what's behind it and how we came to those assumptions. So enrollment and staffing, of course, that's a big part of revenue. There's the enrollment piece, based on how many students we have and the basic allotment. That's where we get the big number from. Of course, our demographic trends and what changes we're expecting. We should have our demographic back at next week, next month for a meeting to kinda share us some more information out with us. And then staffing considerations. You guys say, what are our students' needs? And then prioritization of essential roles and all term finance sustainability. Then our revenue assumptions. Again, there are three major parts of revenue, that's our state, our federal, and local. And you can see in federal, that's been decreasing over the years. Our federal grants, Title I, we have indirect costs that we use, and we normally gain revenue from that. And then our special education, most of it is SHARs. And I think you're familiar, and we shared with you, the SHAR has been decreasing for the last few years significantly. And then our state, people allocation trends, potential legislative changes. We're right in the middle of that in a legislative year. And then our local, we're looking at property tax treaties and saying, what do we think they may be? We're reaching out to the chief appraiser and asking him, what does he see to get our assessed value? And then all of our original statistics. So we're gonna pause there, go back to that screen, and we'll do our activities. So we have some scribes at their table. They have some information to pass out to you. Our first activity is gonna be a budget assumption worksheet. And there are instructions on there that the scribe will lead you through. We're gonna review, each table has their own assumption. There's nothing scientific around it. I put some numbers together, I took them together just to get you to thinking about enrollment is decreasing, and other assumptions that we may be making, how does that impact our revenue? How does it impact our expenditure? And what decisions do we need to make as it's on the end? So we're gonna take the next 20 minutes. Your scribe will fill out that board working, and we'll have table discussions and try to answer some of those questions based on the assumption that you have.
Okay.
Just describe it.
For sure. We, our situation was in, our enrollment will decrease by 1,000 students. Staffing counts will remain the same. The basic allotment will remain unchanged, and our budget shortfall will be $35 million. How would it affect our revenues? We would lose approximately $6,160,000. The thing is, it doesn't really have any true nominal impact because when you look at that, you could just pretend number 77 campuses, 1,000 students, that's a haul of 13 kids having a campus. That is not enough to change electricity building, any true cost to make up that money. What areas of the budget could be impacted? Special offerings and our services. Possible adjustments. This would consider school consolidation and offlining, program consolidations, scheduling, staffing adjustments, ratios, raises, payroll, increasing extracurricular fees. How could these re-adjustments affect the students, staff, and operations? We might lose our school of choice opportunities. Could also, it would be a possibility that there would need to be rebounders drawn and issued. And that's as far as we got, because we talk a lot.
Can I say, as far as we take the camera and screening this in the future, these are all hypothetical things that we are, these are scenario-based discussions.
Correct. But also, we were in Austin this week, and we heard these are real situations happening all around the state. And so as much as this isn't real for us, it could be, and it is real in places. And I think that's why you're having us talk about these things, because we're seeing what could happen. And we are not proactive in our marketing, our advertising, and getting our students back. And keeping, making sure we're advocating at that state level that they have to increase our funding. Otherwise, this dire situation we just brilliant doomsday team came up with could happen. I mean, we feel like the knights of the doomsday table over here.
One more table, real quickly, before we go out. Pile of tears between these three?
David just resigned.
There we go.
And so, yeah. So our assumptions were, enrollment will decrease by 1,000 students, which by the way, assuming 56,000 currently, that's less than 2%. Inflation will continue to increase, so we're gonna assume like 6% or 7% there. And staffing fill rate will increase to 100%. So essentially saying that staffing will stay the same unless you were assuming that we only fill 80%. No payroll savings. So basic allotment will be increased and generate an additional $10 million. If you take the fact that our average per student funding is not the 6,160 basis, it is $10,400. That basically nets to zero right there. A little bit decrease in cost, but the basic allotment increase doesn't get us anything. So most of our, in our scenario, most of our budget deficit will be impacted by the increase in inflation. So some of the, I'll let Mike speak to some of the ways we're gonna do it. But one of the ways we thought about was also looking at where those 1,000 disappeared from. Was that declining birth rates? Or were people choosing to leave the district and go to charters or homeschool or assume, you know, assuming that's the voucher bill passed and now they're going to Oak Ridge. So again, targeted advertising to bring students that had left back in our neighborhood, since we're open enrollment, bring those in. And then what else did we have?
As far as potential adjustments, and again, imagine on potential, class size increase, increasing the student-to-teacher ratio, potential campus efficiencies, which may include consolidation. Increasing class size would have a negative, could have a negative impact on student outcomes. We know there's a lot of research that's behind that. And then some final recommendations would be considering some variation of 0% to 1% to 2% to 3% salary increase instead of going to 4%. And while we don't have any vacant positions, if we do, for whatever reason, we just surplus them and try to figure out a way to operate with that.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And again, our people and Dr. Smith said, each one of you had a different assumption that was made of. It's not our decision, as we are right now. We will be looking at, asking revenue and bringing this to the board and watching to see where we might be between these two.
26, where I was starting.
So that activity probably should have been about an hour, right? So we kinda rushed it up. I do have two other activities, and we'll try to combine those. So I'll go through the next slide fairly quickly and let you see the information on them. So all the assumptions are for revenue. We've generated where our revenue's gonna be. Now we need to focus on what our expenditures are. We know how much revenue we have, what are our expenditures, and what parameters do the board want to put around the budget to get that adopted in June. So when you talk about the priorities, you wanna look at instructional programs, support services, facilities maintenance, and you got the first maintenance that we need to focus on. I know one of the groups talked about that a little bit. And then our debt service and reserves, our unbalanced. Financial sustainability should be one of the parameters that the board makes for us as financial services to put around the budget. And then we wanna talk about the budget gap. We know that right now we have a budget gap. We've done some significant work for the 25 years in reducing the deficit. And now we're into working on that other transfer of 49 million. But the total gap is 75. We reduced it by 29 already just from the work that we've done so far. And we hope that that amount will continue to increase. Again, we wanna make sure that at the beginning of the budget, we look at it and we say, we've done the best that we could to identify what our staffing will look like, what our fill rate will look like, so that we don't adopt that budget and then end up in the bottom. And so unbalanced strategy, you should always look at that. We currently have in CE Local, a fund balance policy. The last update to that was 2013, yeah, 2013. That includes five budget parameters. We're gonna talk about some budget parameters today and see what the board thinks, what should they be, should they be changed? The fund balance target for that is 16.67 of unassigned fund balance. And in your toolkit that you received, it shows you a picture of what the fund balance is, what it is compared to what the board strategy is on that. And we're in a good position. What I wanted to point out was, if you look at the expenditures 10 years ago, we were at 498 million. That's in 2014, 15. And I'm pointing at numbers that are not assigned, right? So 498 million, the 16.67% of that would have been about 83 million. 83 million is not where we are now because our expenditures have gone up. So our expenditures budgeted for 2025 are 613 million. 16.67% of that, not the unassigned, but the whole expenditure amount, is 102 million. Our payroll, does anybody know how much we pay in payroll a month? Anybody, staff workers? It's in excess of 40 million a month. So if you think about that, the 83 million is only two months worth of payroll, not other expenditure. So that's something that we want the board to look at is, is the 16.67% of it gonna be changed or adjusted because our expenditures have now increased? And then a guiding principle, what is we gonna use fund balance for? I think one of the groups asked, you know, can we use fund balance? How much is your, two of them asked, what is our fund balance? And I kinda told them, it's at 16.67%. So do it based on that, right? And then, of course, we're in the middle of the 89th legislative session. A lot of information is coming, you know, they're talking about vouchers. They're talking about, you know, the tax, whole harmless tax rate again, going up to 140,000. All of those are things that we have to consider when we're building the budget. And at the same time, we have to make sure that we protect our students and what we're spending on our students to make sure that we're educating them the way we should be. So our next activity, I think we have about 17 minutes. We have two actually, so the scribe will pull those out. We're gonna do, let's do, try to do both at the same time. Start one, and then just finish the other one. The first one we wanna start on? Yeah, is our priorities and constraints. So we'll start wrapping on that one. So basically, just have brief discussion on what must be maintained and enhanced within the district priority area. So each table will have a different priority to work on. If you'll take the first priority? So we're gonna do this based on what our priorities are. If you'll take the second one, which is culture? If you'll take the third one?
Okay, so what needs to be maintained or enhanced in the culture area?
It's, the world is our oyster.
I think one thing that needs to be enhanced, obviously, is professional learning experiences and opportunities across all parts of the system.
It's not just teachers or it's staff.
Right, everywhere.
So what else? I mean, I think we have to maintain our choice. We're gonna do it somehow, because that seems, I think we have to maintain our working place. And it's our choice. And what is the, what's the?
Yeah, what can engage you?
I think we need to keep program this week. Just about, we need to, some, we need, it's about, we don't have, we have certain agents that are not involved. Some things are not, they're not, they're not.
All right. What trade-offs?
Yes, yes, I wish. This is just for. Uh, so like, we're putting, like, because when one.
Nah, I, I just enjoy watching all the, these feeds of sweat.
So another, um, thing around or needs to be around, like, not cutting off. I know, it's okay. And then something about continuing. You're making amazing. Like you just said, I, just sample I S D.
I don't know, sample I S D. I've never met. I've never known these two words.
That's too wordy, I'm already done reading that. It's wordy. I have a great attention span, I'm just realistic.
Simplify, but also.
The majority of us already have at least three. So I wanted us, we only have about, uh, three minutes. So I want us to report out really quickly. If someone at the table would just say, what are your three priorities that you came up with? Or parameters that you came up with?
Okay. We had number two, the board recognizes the fiduciary responsibility to adopt a balanced budget. We'll seek to do so by considering all cost savings and efficiency options. Do you want me to read them all out or just say the numbers? Did we all have the same or not?
No, just whatever, if you'll read them out real quick.
Four is the district will continue to pursue additional revenue, cost savings, and efficiencies, and will work to reduce investments in programs that have not produced sufficient results. We talked about ROI. Um, five, the budget will prioritize investments that are aligned with our strategic goals as outlined in the strategic plan and scorecard. And eight, the budget process must be transparent and include sufficient opportunity for community engagement and feedback.
We had si, we had similar ones. We didn't, we used this as a sample, but we wrote it differently. So one of them was maintain the bond rating. Um, another one was aligning resources to strategic plan and board priorities with a multi-year plan, like planning the budget multi-years, not rather than year by year. Um, maintaining competitive compensation. And then we talked about ROI, focusing on resources where there are high-impact areas and reducing and repurposing areas with low impact.
Not as, because I was just going to. Enhance the TCD, uh, and training to improve student outcomes. Maintain programs of choice and continue to invest in the whole student experience.
Uh, we talked about, uh, the breakers being maintain, uh, fund balance X, whatever that was like, and the product might cost six point seven percent. Um, budget, make sure that we're looking for the, the best products that allow those processes. Make sure that we keep looking to see if we're getting the best process for the things required. And then, uh, looking for redundancies in our budget and then inefficiencies. So just make that priority every year to see where we can get better.
So we have the safety in this one, uh, part. Uh, first, uh, what must be maintained or enhanced for the district part area? Mandatory police and security presence in each of our campuses. Uh, viable, uh, health program, uh, for supporting the health conditions. And, uh, enhance teacher training skills relative to special needs, uh, with our uses. And then the trade-offs that might be necessary. One of the thoughts was more of a trouble of principles. And then the understanding that one side of the house is all, I'm gonna cut you this one. And then, uh, onto the scenario for a question of credit and threat. Uh, the first, uh, first issue would be to invest in initiatives to increase enrollment and revenues, um, through marketing efforts. And then, uh, simplify and create centers of excellence within the district. And then consolidate those facilities to create additional funding to support those centers of excellence.
Awesome, outstanding. And it looks like it's six o'clock and this, uh, top is probably gonna drive me out of here. We did a lot of work in a small amount of time. But what I wanted it to do was to get you thinking about what your parameters might be. Again, CE Local has five parameter, budget parameters in there. Do we need to expand that based on where we are now? Uh, we look very different now than we did in twenty thirteen, so we may need to consider looking at that and revising and what parameters do, uh, does the board want us to kind of, uh, put into our, into our budget process? So I do wanna say thank you to everybody that was here. Uh, thank you to the board. Thank you, uh, Dr. Smith, for allowing me the time, uh, with the board. Um, and we had some, uh, guests that I had. Dr. Anderson, thank you for being here. Uh, last minute, I asked, uh, Dr. Dolph if he wanted to participate and he did. Of course, uh, Ms. Lewis back there, she's part of our finance team. And, uh, there are some others. I, I dragged my team, Cory, Helly, and, uh, and I dragged David in as well, Food Services and Christie over there. So, uh, thank you for your time. Thank you for participating. Thank you for helping, um, the board. And I hope that you take this information and, um, we work together to try to create some parameters for this budget. And we do it a little, uh, better. And we get better on it every year to where when I, uh, recommend or give you proposed budgets, I want all the board members to understand what we're doing and what we're asking for and why and how it's worked out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darla. All right, I will close the workshop at six oh two. And at six oh two, we will now main, meet in closed session pursuant to sections five five one point zero seven one through five five one point zero eight four and five five one point zero eight nine of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. Trustees will now move to the boardroom.